We can get this going. This is 2:00 PM, January 28th. This is a maintenance development meeting. And today we have Councilor Perez, a member, always dedicated. And there's a matter I know that was in her area where she really has been working diligently with Tom. And if we just introduce ourselves, just for record wise of who's been attended.
Oh, how's it going?
Tom Ash, Arcelorion.
It's Councilor Perez, Ward One, City Council.
Your name, please?
Nels Fry.
Introduction, doing an introduction.
Ah, okay, I'm here for the Historic Preservation Trust.
In your name, please?
Nels Fry.
Okay.
Bill Malloy for the Preservation Trust.
Jim Boone, the McKnight Neighborhood Council and Preservation Trust.
Okay, and I want to thank, I want to thank all you guys in attendance. You know, I love the, I love the work that you guys do, definitely. I know me and Councilor Perez, we always speak on all the great work that the Preservation Trust has done. And we definitely are.
The voices, Scott.
I'll be honest. Also, you're muted for some reason.
You're muted. Let me text him.
Hello?
Hey. We're back.
Tom, we're gonna let you speak.
Okay, the last, you're muted to say no, Counselor.
Oh, okay, I said that, thank you Preservation for being here. Me and Councilor Perez have been working on this matter. I know we've been working with Tom, I know she brought it to my attention. She's been working diligently. I want to thank the Preservation for being here. And I was just gonna give it up to Tom and let Tom go over and review briefly of what he has. Because I know you guys, you know, Councilor Perez brought it to my attention. It's something really dear and something important. So we wanted to make sure we got some answers. So I'm just gonna give it to Tom and let Tom speak.
Do you want us on the, do you want us to also introduce ourselves who are on the video?
Oh, yes, yes, of course, yes. I didn't, I didn't, I didn't see, go ahead, if we can introduce people who are online also.
Betsy Johnson, current president of the Metro Center Association.
Hi, Betsy, thank you for being here. And before I let.
But there are others as well here.
There are others, yes.
I can.
Linda O'Connell, I'm the Vice President of the Metro Center Association. I see Erica Swallow and Ken Shea.
Erica Swallow, President of Springfield Preservation Trust.
Yeah, Ken Shea from the Springfield Lot Department.
So I want to thank everyone for attending. But before I also let Tom go over briefly some of the information, I want to at least turn it over to my colleague, Councilor Perez, and she can give it to Tom, allow her to say anything she might want to say. Councilor Perez?
Thank you. Just for the purpose of updating the public, this meeting is concerned about the severance deterioration of the bench at the Stern Square. We had a meeting and I find it that it was, my concern was, because due to the deterioration that I have seen and be involved, it was the decision for the safety of the community to have it removed, just with the condition that we were gonna follow up. One other thing is that concerning is that if we have this bench, it's not only this bench we need to focus of. I think the good thing about it, there's sometimes lesson learned, how many other parks that we have in the city that now the city knows that they are and they're gonna be working. My priority as a City Council for Ward One is to work with this one. And then through the Maintenance Committee, just give upgrade of the good job, not only the bench. This is the other thing that we come together when it's a crisis, but the good things that have been happening around in the parks. And I think Mr. Chair, as the Maintenance Development, we should have another, entertain another meeting and talk about the developments of the parks in the city and how we are taking seriousness of the parks that we are serving. But this particular one, I'm gonna turn it to Tom because I had conversation in order to bring this meeting together so we could have some steps. And Erica, I hear you very loud and clear and I'm an advocate. And for people that doesn't know me, my background, I'm an activist as well since 1969. I chose to come into politics because of the needs of the community. So I just wanted to bring that up front and now I'm turning it to the Executive Director of my departments, Tom Ash.
Thank you, Councilor Perez, and thank you Chairman Brown for calling the meeting. It could be, you know, my position is very simple, that this situation was called to my attention, that there was some danger associated with the bench down at Stern Square. I went down with staff, looked at it, there was some, not major structural damage, but enough where there were sharp edges that posed a potential danger to the public. There was also sinking into the ground a little bit. That was also noted by staff and myself. So I made the decision to remove it. As you know, we live in a litigious society. Didn't want to put this position of the city in any kind of dire straits, so it was removed. So going forward, we plan on having the bench assessed by an outside group. And my advice to Councilor Perez would be to put in a CPA grant to provide the funding necessary to return it. And it's really kind of that simple. I think it's gotten a little bit away from us, a little bit. But I understand and am mindful of the passion around folks around preservation and historical communities about that. So, but again, that's, I made that decision based on the safety of the community.
Thank you, thank you, Tom. Right now, what we'll do is, if you guys have any questions, I'll let Councilor Perez, since I'm not able to see some of the people online and things. If Councilor Perez, if you'd be willing to run this portion of questions and answers, you know, anybody who has a question, just raise your hand in the queue or raise your hand there and Councilor Perez will give you a chance to speak, ask your question. Councilor Perez?
Thank you. So before we turn it over to the questions, I always like to educate the people. What is the Community Preservation Act and how does it work? In order to, and this is for purpose of education, Erica, could you elaborate on that, please? Whoever from the community, what's the community preservation?
You're talking about CPA?
Yeah.
Yes, CPA. Jim is a great person to elaborate, anyone really.
Well, certainly, that was set up to do financing for housing, parks in the city that people have to apply for. Its intention is not to pay for things that the city should otherwise be paying for. This bench was removed with city funds. I don't know what that cost, but it was with city funds that it was removed. I don't know whether it was approved by the Parks Commission to remove it, what the cost was to remove it. But in removing it and saying you're gonna fix it, the implication certainly would be that the city is going to repair it and not say, well, we have to get somebody else to pay for it, that it's an obligation of the city to pay for it, for the repair. Have there been any estimates yet?
Not yet.
You indicated in October that you've gotten some estimates, but that's not so.
No, I have not. I did not indicate.
Okay, and the people removed it, the Baker Masonry? Have you asked them for an estimate on repairing?
No, it's stored right now.
And where is it stored?
At Forest Park.
And we would very much like to have a chance to see it, please? Any problem with having members of the Preservation Trust see the bench where it is? I know the pictures that you posted, it was in a storage area, but behind the bench pieces was all your winter equipment. So obviously, it's been moved since then to get.
It's still stored indoors in the same.
So it'll be fine for us to come and set up a time to come and see. So what is the process for your trying to get estimates for the repair and reinstalling?
I'll work with my staff who have experience in that, in masonry, to arrange for outside groups to come in and somebody to assess it.
Do you have to do an RFP for that?
Probably would.
But I'm just curious, because the mayor asked you in early October to get right on this and that hasn't happened.
Mayor didn't say get right on it, he said Tom will take care of it in short order.
And?
And as you know, Jim, there's about 300 other items that come up on a daily basis, parts that we deal with.
Okay, he asked you on the 24th of October to send a timeline for the restoration or return.
And I've spoken to the mayor about that.
Okay, so do we have any sense?
Yeah, we'll assess it when we can, when somebody.
Hold on, hold on, hold on, hold on, please. Thank you, Tom, thank you, Tom. It is, I just wanna, I thank you for your answers, I mean, and questions. I just want to make sure that, you know, we give other people a chance. They have any questions or concerns, I will always give you a chance to speak. Mr. Boone, you can always come back and I have no problem with you asking continually, continuing your questioning. I just want to give, anyone else, does anyone else have a chance, have any questions maybe? Or concerns that they might want to have addressed by me or Councilor Perez or Tom? Does anyone else have any questions?
My name is.
Nels has a question, Mr. Chair.
Go ahead, you have the floor, sir.
So I really, actually, you know, I think the underlying problem is exactly what you just said, which is we live in a litigious society. I think that's the real reason. So it's just, but, and I appreciate that you said that. I mean, if we lived, that's the underlying reason this happened. You were, there was some minor problem probably, but we can't risk it. Okay, do we have people that could have fixed it on the spot or is that always gonna be an outside job?
Probably gonna be an outside job. Because it's obviously a specialty, bench is not something I would want to, you know, potentially cause further damage to.
So whatever these problems were, as I said, I was sitting on the bench pretty much every day.
Yeah.
I live in the neighborhood, I use it all the time. And I can tell you that I certainly never noticed any problems. Now, of course, I'm not an expert. But, and as I said, I'm sure, you know, I think we know that it's because there was, there's some kind of liability and people were using it all the time and there were people there that were. I'd be worried that they'd bring a lawsuit, frankly, I totally, I totally get it, actually. But I just wanted to, wanted to see if, if there was, you know, you just, you don't have staff that can deal with that.
Well, there was also pointed out to me that the seams are where it meets, because it's in payment pieces, that there was sinking involved. So if it ever did rush down, somebody's sitting on it there, it would be worse than a little bit of damage. In terms of injury.
The seams, like between the different sections?
Exactly.
Okay.
I mean, listen, so it seems like the suggestion is I gotta grudge against this bench misery. I do not, okay, but I do have a responsibility, a superintendent, to make sure that everything in our parks, whether it's at a park where there's a broken swing or whatever, same, in my mind, same thing. A little bit more, obviously, you know, diligence around something like this, but it wasn't in a position to leave it along the way it was. And so that's why we removed it, simple as that. We'll get it, we'll get it assessed and fixed when I can and we'll return it. That's the long and the short.
Anyone else has a question to ask?
I have, Maria, I have my hand up.
Betsy, sorry, Betsy.
Yeah, no, that's fine. This is great news that we're hearing a definitive, it's going to be returned. I, I'm hoping though, there were lapses in terms of keeping the community involved in terms of notifying, you know, upfront notification that here was, you know, here's our assessment of the condition. Here's, I think some of the pushback might have, if people had been warned ahead of time and had been, had some opportunity to have some conversations before the, you know, removal just took place. So I guess my request at this point is if we can elevate the next steps of, the next steps. So as soon as you get an estimate, there's folks like who are the Preservation, we're willing either maybe a direct message to the Metro Center Association and a direct message to the Springfield Preservation Trust, get known so that we have a sense of what the, what the estimates are. And then similarly, if there's any reconsideration to go, because the spring, the community preservation process, that money wouldn't be awarded until next fall. And so that means it's gonna be, the earliest this would come back is in 18 months from now. That's, I'm sorry, unacceptable. So we, we want some other looking at, what are some other, what are the Parks Department funds that could actually pay for this the way it should be? And just at every step, if there's meetings about this to assess what the next step is, let us know. You know, we were taken by surprise when it was removed, rather than, oh, by the way, we found this and this is what we feel we need to happen. Would have been nice to have been notified. Anyway, so, but I really, really do hope that we're not just relying on CPA because that is gonna, as we know, the rewards for that don't come out till next fall. And then if we don't get that award, then we're waiting three years. You know, so something's not right here.
So, Betsy, on your part that you have to express, I as the City Council Ward One, if I'm contacted by the city in a safety issue, I'm not gonna weigh because there's a way here. There's things that we could have meeting and decide. But when it's a safety issue, let me, let me finish, please. When it's a safety issue and it's contacted that this isn't, according to the reporting, I have to report that it's a safety issue, it's like going to a store and somebody shooting, you have to delegate on a safety issue. It's not like we're gonna have something that is gonna be built and we gotta go through the repel. It was presented as a safety issue. And when it comes to the safety issue of the community, you have to create that balance. Just for clear enough, that is not the lack of communication, because I'm very well involved when it comes to the community. The presentation was, it wasn't, the way it was tilted, the bench and all that, the report, it was a safety issue. That's why I have spoken to the Chair of the Maintenance Development, because the goal is to return the bench and that's one of the priority. So now we on the process of phase one, what's next? How are we gonna put timeframe and what is the timeframe? I know that what I'm hearing from the Executive Director from the Park Department is that now there has to be an assessment and how much is the cost and all that by their staff. And then all work together for the goal of having this bench returned back to where it is, which I've been advocating for that and Tom could attest for that. So on the venue, I think that looking at this meeting that I was gonna anyway have, because it's a need for it, but how are we gonna go about it? Phase one, phase two? Because when it comes to projects like this, we have to have a process. I just wanted to make a statement about the matter.
And I thank you, Councilor Perez. And for, for, for the people in attendance and for the people online, Councilor Perez had brought this to my attention. And what we're looking to do is, it's gonna be more of a, of a two phases. So this is still just the first phase. So I'm glad that the Preservation, you guys are around because we're gonna need you on the second phase. Because basically, the second phase is that there's so many different, maybe benches and different things out there that might, that might need to be repaired or might acquire attention or that we, we might have overlooked, just like this bench throughout Springfield. I, we want to know, Councilor Perez, I said, you know, Councilor Brown, I, we want to know. I want to know what's out there and we want to, you know, make sure. So like, like, like was said earlier, when this funding and stuff is coming about, we know which ones we want to target, what's being targeted, what's need repairs. So it's not something that's just gonna surprise everyone. So this is something like, we want to be able to put in the place where even using you guys, we'll be able to identify what needs to be done. And when the funding is coming, we can prioritize the different projects, making sure that the different ones are getting addressed, how, you know, how might, we might want to get addressed. Because to tell you the truth, there are so many different projects out there. I know in my area alone, Tom has been in my area, he's in my area all the time. We just, we just got a half a million, half a million dollars to redo a park. So there's different projects and different things that are going on. I want, and I would love to have you guys, even on this particular piece, help us to make sure the city and the Preservation people were not missing the information and we're working together. So with this, I know Councilor Perez that she want to make sure that that happens. Councilor Perez, I don't know if you want to talk on it at all, if anybody?
No, I just said, any other questions that a group might have at this point?
I was just gonna add, the reason I broached the CPA, and I understand that there's competitiveness around that, is because my budget last year got cut 500,000, it's going into this year. So money is tight, we know in the city, a lot of our federal grants right now are locked, can't use them. And so it's gonna be tight, we're not getting into, the city's not gonna match grants anymore. But it's just not, we're not at that point where we were pre-COVID and actually during COVID. So I broached that for that reason. Money is not gonna be as fluid as it was. And again, we took a pretty major cut. Again, that's not to say that the conversation between myself, the mayor and the CFO won't be centered around this, but I'm just being mindful that money's not where it was. That's why I broached CPA.
Thank you, Tom. Any, any, Mr. Boone, I want to be able to get, we can circle back around. I want to make sure that you have a chance, that you have any, any issues or concerns you want to address. I want to give you an opportunity.
It just, it just feels like, you know, we sort of see a future, but that can't even start until whether there's an RFP or whatever, a request from somebody to give us a, to give the Parks Department a number that they can then put together in a request for funds from whoever they're gonna request this front from. I mean, Baker Masonry did the demolition. They are a very reputable local corporation. They did the demolition. I would think they would be in a very good position to say what it would cost to put it back together. I mean, they took it apart and they shipped it to you. So they must be fairly familiar with the piece. I would think that they would fairly easily be able to give you an estimate to repair it.
No, no, no. Mr. Boone, Mr. Boone, can I, can I, can I ask you? As far as just that actual bench aside, is there any other projects out there that you know of? Are there other, that's kind of like where I noticed, I know this one, I'm just curious. Because there gotta be other ones also. Is there other ones also or is this, or this is kind of like the only one you guys on your radar?
Well, right, certainly at the moment, this is, this is the predominant thing on, it's not just on our radar, but downtowns, there obviously was a very big citywide concern about this one issue. And that's what we're here to talk about tonight. We certainly, we had proposed an amendment or reconsidering on the demolition delay to add more things than just buildings to demolition delay so that things like this that are, are of cities history would, would get some kind of review before being moved, torn down, changed. And I think that we had submitted a demolition delay, a suggested amendment. I'm not quite sure where that is right now. Erica may, may know more about that. So that we could be, just as you're saying, so that we can have a mechanism to be aware of this kind of situation citywide of other kinds of, be it public art. There's innumerable public art, statues, plaques, historic plaques, those kinds of things. Some on public property, some on private property that, that should be an eye kept on. So, yeah, so we are looking at the bigger picture as well as, as just this one.
And that's, that's why I started and I requested this meeting. And I had said all along, not only for one particular, because it's my war, I don't work like that. I represent my war, but there's other concerns with other colleagues in the city about the same issue. I like to open it up like this meeting and just not only the purposes. If there's other thing, how are we gonna put a protocol in place that we could assess and work with the community? So this is the first step. The report of imminent safety is one issue, the restoring is another phase and the assessment is another phase. And I should go back, assessment, restorment. But this is the first time ever and I'm taking this opportunity so we could have a protocol in place. And if there's any amendment because of this particular bench, I would like to be involved as well. It's not that it was taken a decision that we didn't want to know. We need to work as a team because I'm looking at the bigger picture. So Maintenance Development, my colleague, Brown, is the Chair of it. We, I had this conversation, I wonder how many other preservation articles are out there that we could have a protocol in place because it's not only the restoration, the monies and all that. And if there's other, how are we gonna work with this budget? And I think that that was what I was trying to put in place before only having one particular article looked up. I think that we learn lessons learned and I think this is the first time a conversation like this ever has been put in place. So, and that's my approach of working as a City Council. It's not only my war and my war only. I work with all my colleagues as a team. Thank you. Jessica, I see you have your hands up.
Yes, I can talk about that wider ordinance level like change that Jim was talking about and that you're also suggesting that the city consider. The Springfield Historical Commission is currently. And that you're also suggesting that the city consider. The Springfield Historical Commission is currently looking at. Uh, in conjunction with um, zoning consultant Sean Suter of ZoneCo. Um, rewriting the ordinances, chapter forty on historic districts and chapter two eighteen on historic preservation. And in their, the November meeting of um, the Historical Commission. The trust did put forth some recommended language that would. Uh, propose a process for dealing with not just one. Uh, one particular piece of history, but would actually protect entire classes. Um, specifically, um, structures, objects and sites to be added. Beyond just buildings, which is currently all the Historic Commission deals with. But if a structure, object or site with historic significance of over, being over seventy-five years old is the current ordinance. So if we were to add those protections, then anytime a structure such as this one. Was going to be um, at all uh, altered, then it would go to the Historic Commission, Historical Commission first. To make sure that the Historical Commission approves of the plan uh, to do it. Of course, the safety process, the process involving safety would be something that would have to be discussed. Um, I'm, I'm not sure how concerns of safety are dealt with in that scenario, um, but there might be a way. For a structure that's of a certain size, for example, to put, you know, maybe the, you know, in my opinion. Something that would be a little more reasonable would be to put a covering over it while the Historical Commission is being consulted. Um, so I'll be happy to email that um, letter that. Yeah, I'll email that too. Uh, I I have uh, your email and Malu, uh, Consular Brown's email, so I'll send it to you. And then anyone I can remember was in the meeting, I can CC them.
And I think this is great because there's no protocols in place and we could put the protocols in place. I think that the next step is that we are gonna, what I hear is we need to have a. Type of assessment of the cost of the bench. And then from there, we need to see how we're gonna go about about restoring this bench. And put it into the place that belongs to.
I- is it reasonable for the, for the city council to request? Uh, whatever the right word is of the Parks Department that they get this process moving? I mean, we were promised that it was gonna get moving in the beginning of October and and it still hasn't. That that is there, is it reasonable that city council says? We've heard this, we understand the importance, and we really need to have this RFP out or these estimates out. By a specific date. I know that that every agency has priorities. But, you know, if the mayor says, I want it by the twelfth of of March. Amazingly enough, it'll happen by the twelfth of March. I don't know whether city council has that same kind of. But your influence on the mayor would be, you know, there, I've been listening to these people and we really need to have. A a a goal date by which we're gonna.
Well.
To move forward.
And I think uh, as the chair, uh, my colleague Brown being the chair of maintenance development, that's what I just just said. Um, looking forward was the next step and the next step is seeing where are we with the monies, with the information we we just got here. I um, about the coding and the federal grants. I think that would imply having another meeting and coming back and and then looking at who are the people. I know you said um, Mason, they uh, Beacon Mason.
Baker Masonry, they're familiar with the park, they took it apart, they shipped it. So there there, there's nobody more familiar with that piece than them.
Well, and 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 why, and why, I just why I have you guys here for the second meeting. I I um, where it's so beneficial is I I I, we do wanna make sure. Um, as a city, um, that we have the the line, open lines of communication. So. I I I I know Tom, I know uh, me, Tom, I know Consular Perez, we we wondered. You know, the 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 preservation trust, you guys do, you guys are good at what you do. I I definitely wanna collab with making sure that we know. Any, you know, we, they, it it's gonna take a a a a team effort. So. This might be the first one that we might really be be uh, uh, fighting for. But there's other ones out there. So I'd like to at least have an idea of a list of what's out there. What might, you know, might need to, might needs to be serviced in a year, two years. So it's not just. Um, jumping out at us. Um, you know, and with you, you guys help. So I I'm glad that you guys are looking to try to revise some of the things. So when, when, when we see hiccups, we know we, we have a a a. A line where we can communicate with you guys and 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 we're working with you guys. Because this right here, um, we're looking to kinda like make sure from this point on. The communications and the portance, cuz you guys kinda like would be able to. And you guys are, I I, you guys are the experts when it comes to the importance. That's how I feel. So even with this particular bench, if you guys are saying to me, Consular Brown. Uh, cuz Cons- Consular Perez came to me, she was like, Cons- Consular Brown, this is a bench in my area. We, you know, we have to fight for this, this is what we want. I don't wanna seem like I'm just fighting for just my area cuz I know it's all over, but. I need, we need this, you know, uh, uh, so I wanna make sure if this is the first project, we kinda fighting for that. We, you know, we get a win project at a time, but we still be able to identify any future issues. So while we're waiting, like like Tom was saying and 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 like the other young lady was saying, a lot of times it comes out with a budget. Um, I work with budgets with uh, uh, on a state level. So sometimes it depends on how they fall. And 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 where they lie. So the budget only comes out a certain time every year, and sometimes certain other budgets will come out. Um, between those years. So it'll really depend on how it lies. And then now, once you get that funding, you only get a certain amount. So I think a lot of people don't understand, like say you get a certain amount of funding. And now we sit there, we came together and we say, hey, we wanna fix uh, eight benches. And they say, no, funding don't require us. We can't fix eight, we can only fix one. That's just kinda, and we can only fix it over there in Forest Park. We can't fix that one in East Springfield. We can fix two in Coro, we can't fix one in sixteen acres. So a lot of times Tom is taking that, and the city is taking that into consideration. But when it comes to historic stuff, if you guys wanna aid, we d- I definitely would would love to collaborate. And and so we know, um, this is where we're prioritizing. So this is kinda like a working meeting. Even for the next time.
Mallow, just one thing I just wanted to clarify. On the other hand, the CPA deadline for twenty twenty-five. Is in just over a month from now. So if, um, so maybe it's a matter of just getting that initial estimate. Uh, if we're, uh, not that I feel it's the best source of money, but it's gonna be totally. Not a source of money unless an estimate is gotten in the next two weeks. So that a proposal can be submitted in this round. Otherwise, it's going, it's, it's being delayed even. Even further. So I'd say it would be, uh, it would be really appreciated if we. Took advantage of the company, the masonry company. Uh, get that estimate so that there is even the possibility of putting in a CPA proposal. Very often, the neighborhood councils are who submit with. Uh, in conju- are the actual applicants for a various CPA propos- park-related. CPA proposals in a given area and um. We, the Met, Armory Quadrangle or Metro Center has done that. Uh, been active that way for a number of times um, throughout the city, as has East Springfield and Forest Park. And so we're prepared to um, help put in that proposal. If the Parks Department can at least go back to the one Mason and get a ballpark number to put in for. Um, so I I, rather than, um, I know there's this bigger picture and these other items, but. Um, you know, this is, this has been an outstanding issue now for a number of months and uh. I, you know, I don't know whether Tom feels that's possible or not to get that, get that estimate. So say our association can, our council can be the one to. Basically submit the CPA proposal.
A a question for the assessment purpose, is there any cost for that?
To get an estimate, there shouldn't be. You know, it, I I don't know when you get into to city stuff about whether you have to have some RFP that specifically asks. You know, specifies what needs to be done, but it seems to be a masonry company should be able to tell you. What needs to be done to make this safe and to get it reinstalled, put it back together and reinstalled. They're the experts, the Parks Department, understand that aren't the experts. The, but the masonry company that took it apart. Gotta be, a- and they, i- if you look at their website, they specialize in this stuff. Now, they're a local company. They should be able to give an estimate for restoring it and reinstalling. They should be able to do that. It it, they should be able to do that. They need to be requested to do that. And I don't know why they haven't been requested since October.
So, and that's why I precipitated to call this meeting.
Yeah.
If you see, I precipitated to call this meeting exactly for that. So now the RFP uh, has to be submitted.
I I don't know what the city's processes.
The CPA deadline is the end of February.
Right, but no, the city has to ask. Uh, Baker Masonry to come out once again, visit the the stuff. Estimate, they're they're familiar with it, they know what it looks like. What will it take to restore this to safety and reinstall it? Two, two fairly simple questions.
And then communicate that information to the uh, Metro Center and we'll submit the um.
They have to submit that to the Parks Department, uh, Park Department, working maybe with Metro Central comes up with a CPA proposal. But time is really of the essence. Do this in the next two weeks and you're a year and a half out.
So let me tell you something and I'll be very upfront, it's only two weeks. Um, now we have to look at the assessment of this, the RFP. Um, in two weeks, it's not in in.
I I don't know whether they need an RFP in order to come in and give an estimate.
Like when we were putting in our CPA proposal for Merrick Park. There was no RFP for that.
So you don't need that.
Okay, so those are the questions that I'm asking. So just the estimate itself will be, and then the next step will be?
The estimate would include, here's, here are the steps. I mean, the proposal needs to outline. Here's the work that's gonna be done, like. What we're taking, you know, how it would be cleaned up, how it'd be made safe, how how it has to be reinstalled. Um, so that it isn't sinking, et cetera. And here's the estimate to do that work. That's what we then put in to the CPA, in the CPA proposal.
On September twenty-third, Mr. Ash said that we have received an initial quote for repair that is quite costly. So he said on the twenty-third of September that he had an initial quote for repair. Today, he said he didn't have one. So. I I, I don't know what that means, but he did in writing, wrote a a letter to to Eric Swallow. Saying that he had an initial quote for repair.
And I haven't seen that letter.
And a, a lot of, a lot of times, uh, it uh, and I don't know in this particular time when you. Even when you get, i- it's never just one actual bid. You can never just use one, you have to see because they're so far off a lot of times. Um, they usually require three.
Um, CPA, for a CPA proposal, that's the decision of the CPA review board. Whether they had wanted multiple, there's not a.
It's different.
When it's actually an award, yes, you'd have to get.
Okay.
Additional quotes and stuff, but to put in a proposal. You can, I could put in a proposal today and make up a number, you know. And make up a number and then it's up to the CPA committee to decide. You know, what your justification is for those numbers. You know, so in fact, if desperate, I could put in the proposal. And then from now until. On the next month, basically, then the committee starts holding hearings about the proposal. In like April, May, March, April, I would then need to get further documentation by. The time I have to go justify it. And bring it up to them. And I've seen when people have been making proposal. You know, gone before the committee and made their presentations. They have altered even the requests of how much money they're asking for at that point. So it's. You know, I mean, as I said, I mean, I'm, I'd work with the um, uh, Preservation Trust if desperate to. Get an estimate in there, but I, it would be better if it. Came with, from the Parks Department.
And you know, I have to attest to this as being the city council one-one, I wish all those communications. And when it have been open to me, because when I see any in the community, I jump at it. But I did not have no communication until I had um, the communication about the safety. And right now, those communications that is there, I don't even have that. I would have done, but now, you know, lesson learned. So let me see what could we work. Chairperson, um, my colleague, um, uh, ma- uh, Brown. Any recommendation for the next step?
Um, what I, what I would wanna do, someone's sharing, could someone stop sharing?
Erica showed us the letter that says. Uh, Eric is just showing us the letter that shows, we have received an initial quote for repair that it, that is quite costly.
Oh, I can't read it.
What is it?
How do you see what she, how are you reading that? And I can't read that with my glasses.
I I just wanted to share this since uh, it wasn't, you know, easily made public, but I'm not here to, you know. Talk to say, you know, one way or another, or now he says this, or now he says that, but I do wanna share that. And I had heard it was in the range of forty to fifty thousand from sources who were close. So um, just to give an indication of what I've at least heard, uh, that there, I believe some quote did get made. Maybe it was too informal for um, for Director Ash to consider it a true quote. Um, maybe he doesn't really consider that a quote, you know.
Okay, a- and so what I. So what was said, what would stop, why can't, why can't we just do our own quote? And 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 turn it in like, like was said earlier, why can't we just do it that way?
Well, because within a month of putting it in, you, and because every proposal. The proponents for every proposal then have to go and give a present, oral presentation. To the committee and justify their requests.
For what committee?
Weaker your justification is, well, you know, it's like going before the committees at the state, you know. Somebody puts in a bill and then comes to the public hearing and is, doesn't have justification, that's the end. So I'm just looking at, that would only be to buy a little more time to get a real quote. Um, you know, so that, that's what I'm, that's what I'm. That's the frame I'm putting it in. You know, and if if it sounds like there's an initial sort of off-the-cuff estimate of. I would see the most costly part of this is the um, shipping. And the reinstallation so that there wouldn't be future sinkage. And that kind of thing. I I can see that being the most costly part of this whole. Issue, which is, brings up a whole different issue of why wasn't that done correct correctly? When Stern Square was totally rebuilt three years ago. You know, I mean, it sounds like in a sense, the city. You know, I mean, it sounds like in a sense the city got, had a contractor rebuilding Stern Square who really should have, who's, who shares some of the, the fault here. But that's water over the dam and we're now having to fix it. But, um, I can see that being the most costly part of, um, I could see that being why it could be that, this expensive. I don't, I don't think the actual repairs to the masonry in the shop are gonna be that, that bad, but I could see the moving it back and installing it pro- properly could re- bring the price to, could bring, I mean, it's a big piece. There's no, there's no doubt about it. Um, but so, you know, I, I'm willing to at this point, uh, pretend, you know, we'll keep talking, uh, see if we can maybe get, um, it'd be best if it was the Parks Department contacting Baker Masonry. Maybe it has to be the Springfield Preservation Trust. Um, and see if we can get something more specific, but I'm willing to work with them to maybe at least get a proposal in so that we don't use, lose a whole nother year.
Yeah, I would, I would, I would, and, you know, I, I would still, I mean, I would do it. I mean, you, I know you guys have our support. Um, I'm not familiar. You guys are the experts at it. I'm trying to, I know me and Councilor Perez and even.
I mean, I've been involved with, I think, over the years, six different CPA proposals, um, so of different types. Not all, you know, the big one being the bicycle, the bicycle skate park. Um, but also, uh, we put in for one for Merrick Park that didn't get funded, uh, cause too much is up in the air. But then, you know, and then, well, and then signage and improvement of the River Walk was one that did get funded and, um, I was very much involved with. So, yeah, that's why I'm familiar with, put, you know, the actual application itself is not that complicated. You, what is more trying is showing up in front of the committee and you get two minutes to make your case and then answer questions.
Well, I know, I know, um, as far as, uh, you know, if you guys wanna put it together and try to get it in and then if you need, uh, if you need, uh, even support with the committee, I don't know if it's a complicated interest. I believe we might be able to testify at it. I know me and my colleague.
Yeah, the test, I know, only at the, basically only the, um, proponents do the testifying in this case. But you can add support letters and things like that into the proposals or list supporting.
Yeah, so we would give, give you the support letters. We try to help, you know, we try to help.
Yeah.
If it's something we wanna try to rush and hurry up and at least try to get it in, you know, to make like, I, 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 I think we should do what you're saying too, you know, and then whatever, you know, people we can get to sign as support and just, you know, try to see if we can get this in. Um.
I mean, one of the, 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 the principle, there are two ab- um, two, there are basically two, uh, two required support, um, letters. One is from the property owner and one is from the neighborhood council where the project is taking place. So, um, I would, I would assume since Tom is, who brought it up going to CPA, that we'd get the Parks Department to, as the owner, to support it. And, um, I represent, I will have to bring it to my board, but I, um, yeah, as you know, my vice president couldn't stay on the call, but she, I, I, I'd say we're gonna, we'd have support.
So, um, for the time factor, the next step is getting that estimate is what I hear.
Right. Tom Ash has to call Baker and ask him to come out and look at this stuff and give them an estimate for restoration and reinstallation. That, nothing can go forward until that happens.
And you say there's no cost to do that?
There's no cost to get it.
Shouldn't be.
Come out and give you an estimate on doing a job.
No. Yeah.
It's just arranging a time that they come out and hopefully they'd wanna do it. I mean, they, they must've gotten paid a significant amount of money for taking it down and moving it to the Parks Department. Presumably they've been paid.
Okay, so.
That's, that's the next step, but that has to happen in the next week or two. I mean, the, the power of the council is to.
And even if.
We're not gonna, we're not gonna be as a body. Um, Jim, I just, you know, I just, I just wanna, cause I, I, I wanna make sure that we, we have some, um, contingency plans. Um, the council doesn't meet until.
Well, if you just, I think you just need to send a summary to Tom and say the meeting ended with a willingness to go in for, uh, with Metro Center Association, uh, putting in a CPA proposal that's due in a month. If long, if, but we really need you to ask Baker to come out in the next two weeks and give us at least a, as detailed a restoration and reinstallation estimate as possible. So the, if you could, you and Maria could ask, basically go back to Tom and ask him to at least do that for us, um, we'll do the rest.
Now, can, can, can you guys ha- is there some way someone can contact them? Have them ready? Or, or what is it? Uh, it, 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 it doesn't sound that big of a deal. I don't understand.
Well.
Are you worried?
No, we don't think it's a big deal, but the Parks Department has to be who lets Baker in to.
Okay.
We can't, I can't just call up Baker and say, meet me at Forest Park on, next Monday afternoon. I won't get into the, where it is.
So to wrap up, it should be that we need that estimate, correct? And to submit and timely matter to the CPA? So we look into what the CPA could do with the matter, correct?
Yes.
Yes. And, and, and then we'll look to shoot back, maybe, uh, I'll, I'll schedule another meeting, um, in the future. But, uh, Betsy and Jim, if you guys, make sure you guys keep in touch with me and Councilor Perez.
Communications, because I didn't have none of those communications too.
Yeah.
What I'm saying, and working as a team will move everything together. Cause if I would've had all those communications, you know, uh, it's like cooking in the kitchen. If I don't have the ingredient, it's not gonna come out that good, you know? But if I got all the ingredient, I'm making sure that it does come out good. So whatever you think that, but let's look at that and then let's reconvene another meeting.
Okay.
I think that we got to a consensus that if we get that estimate, the CPA is willing to have this proposal together and look at what we could, uh, uh, if we could get this running.
Yeah. And meanwhile, I'll start, I'll write, I'll, I'll, I'll email, I'll, uh, maybe during this, we'll leave this week or into the beginning of next week. Um, you know, send you the boiler, the CPA boilerplate, you know, so you have a sense of what, what this application is.
Okay. That will be, that's a learning process and it's always good to learn about that because I got some other questions in the la- later on when it comes to the CPA, um, and other aspects of project. So I think that we have some homework to do. Okay?
Okay. So with that, I kind, I, this has been a great meeting. Unfortunately, uh, we ran it out of time. We need, I could do it. We need more, we needed a little bit more time.
Oh, I think we're, I think we got enough on our plate. Okay.
But, um, I wanna thank everyone, uh, for, for coming. Make sure, uh, like I said, Betsy, Jim, you guys keep in touch. Uh, Councilor Perez, I tried not to let you have, you know, my worker too. Uh, she, she, she worked, she worked so much, you know, I would keep her in my area. But, uh, I wanna thank you guys for the work that you guys do. Uh, you guys always are impressive, uh, for your commitment to the community. And I wanna thank my colleague, uh, Councilor Perez, uh, for really spearheading this and bringing it to my attention. And, uh, I always wanna always thank Tom, um, for always being tentative. I'm hoping that we can work together and get this thing situated. And I can assure you that me and Councilor Perez, we will be on it. And, uh, um, if there's any concerns or anything, just make sure you guys, uh, reach out to us. Okay, you guys, uh, with that in mind, go ahead, Jim, you guys have any, you have anything?
No, I'm saying, thank you. Bye-bye.
Okay.
All right, with that in mind, God bless everyone.